Everyone, before I call the meeting to order, I think we have a couple of special guests this morning. I love your special, but we have a couple of special, special guests this morning that I'd like to, number council members, to introduce to you. First, I'll call on Councilwoman Vicki Foot to introduce her guest.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have with me today Marla Setson, and she is my great-granddaughter. Her dad is a fireman here in the city. And her last day before she goes to school, she wanted to come to the city council meeting to see what I do. So she has a notepad here, and she's taking notes, so.
She's already started?
The, um, no, she's already started, yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilman Ernest Brooks also has a guest here today.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's my distinct pleasure to announce the attendance here at our meeting this morning. Jakarius Conley, Jakarius, stand up. Jakarius is our 2017 National Ambassador for the Jackson Do the Right Thing Challenge, and just came back from Washington DC and had a wonderful experience. Attended a session at the Library of Congress as well as the US Supreme Court, and we are pleased to have him here. He is a rising freshman at Madison Academic High School.
Very good. Glad you all can be here and join us.
We'll call it order, the August 1st, 2017, meeting of the Jackson City Council, and we're going to ask Councilmember Vicki Foot to lead us in our invocation and pledge. So if you would, please stand.
Would you pray with me, please? Father in heaven, we come to you this morning with hearts full of gratitude for your goodness, for your blessings. And Father, sometimes I feel that we do too much begging and pleading and imploring you to meet our needs when you know our needs already before we ask. You know the need of every person in this room. You know the needs of every neighborhood, every city, our state, our country. And Father, we just leave those needs with you, knowing that you are about taking care of them in your own way and in your own time. So, Lord, this morning, we take a moment just to praise you, to praise your goodness, to praise your love, your forgiving nature, your power, your glory, your promises. We love you, Lord, and we love that you sent your son for us because you loved us unconditionally. And it's in his name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three, now you can show, I think, all council members present this morning. And item four is approval of the minutes, July 11th, 2017, meeting. Those minutes have been distributed to council. If there's no objection, we'll go ahead and approve those minutes as submitted. Item five is invitation to public comment. And I encourage you, if there's any item under new business, under new business, if you want to be heard, if you'll just simply let me know, raise your hand or stand, I'll be happy to call on you and ask you to come up, okay, and address the council. We have no proclamations this morning. We have no recognition, so we'll go on to our first readings. Consideration of ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Cedar Street running between McCallitt Street and Talbot Streets, submitted by Richard Barber, T A M B of Jackson, Tennessee, Inc.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
You have the materials for this request. As you can see on the screen, they are proposing to abandon Cedar Street. Aspel Manor has acquired all properties on both sides of this section of Cedar Street, and so they wish to abandon that so they can convert that to a driveway to serve their campus. Also, they're going to be placing a barricade and closing it at McCallitt. That was their original premise, they wanted to do that. But at the time, about a year or so, it's been about a year or more, they came to you and asked to close it on the Talbot side because at the time, there was still one property owner on the south side of Cedar that was still not owned by Aspel Manor. Well, now, those property owners are no longer in the picture, and Aspel owns that property. So they're asking to close and abandon this section of Cedar. And as you see in the ordinance, they will be responsible for putting the barricade up on the, at the McCallitt Street. And also, the Cedar Street section will cease to be a public street. It will be internal driveway, and they will, we also are in this ordinance are stating that the closure that was originally approved on the north side of Talbot is going to remain open because Public Safety wanted to make sure we had at least one access point into the property, and we are doing that.
Okay, let's get a, let's get a motion and a second, then we'll continue the discussion.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
A second, okay, discussion.
Quick question. Because we're abandoning the street, the barricade at the McCallitt side doesn't have to be a movable barricade? It can be movable?
It could be bollards.
Okay.
It could be whatever.
It doesn't have to be because we're abandoning the street, right?
It's just whatever type of barricade they feel is, you know, can secure their property. And they're not required to put, you know, the click to enter or anything like we require some because they're not securing their entire property. There's still one way for Public Safety to get in. So after we explained this to our Public Safety partners, they were fine with what they're asking for.
Thank you.
Stand, will they have to approve that with the planning department?
The barricade says that their design will be approved by the city. So they'll bring us and tell us what they're going to do, and we'll know exactly how they're going to do it, so.
And they own Talbot Towers now?
They do, and that's the reason why they wanted to keep it open on Talbot's side, to kind of serve that property.
Thanks.
Any other questions of council before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is an ordinance on first reading, requires a public hearing. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing to see if there's anyone here who'd like to be heard on this matter, either in opposition to or in support of. If you would, let me know, and we'll be happy to call you up. Come on up. Mr. Richard.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Richard Barber. I have the privilege to be Executive Director at Aspel. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One, thank the city for their support of what we've been able to do at Aspel over the last few years. If we're able to close this, the reason we want to close Cedar Street, we'll, we'll take over the maintenance of it. We, of course, own the 300 block there between, of North Highland, between Talbot and McCallitt. We also, as Councilman Brooks pointed out a few years ago, bought Talbot Towers and the property adjacent to that. What we would like to do is make that one contiguous campus. Currently, our women's programs are on the east side of Cedar Street, and we get guys coming through and, you know, making comments or, you know, how that stuff goes. So if we can close that off, we will actually put a double gate on the McCallitt end of Cedar. The Talbot end will be open. That's where most of our population is, and that's where we'd like to, where they can come and go on that end. What it has actually allowed Aspel and the city of Jackson to do, y'all, is create a recovery community. That's, today, there's over 100 people that live in those two blocks that are in recovery or in treatment, and that's pretty unique in our country. And I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Rich. Any, any questions of Richard while he's here? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is anyone else who'd like to be heard in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance? If you would, just let me know. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We have a motion, a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, under second readings, item nine is consideration of ordinance to amend official municipal code of the city of Jackson, Title 15, Chapter 12, registration of vehicles. This is an ordinance already passed on first reading.
Move the adoption?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two, under second reading, consideration of ordinance to rezone property located along the 50 block of Orwell Road from AO FH Agriculture Open Land Flood Hazard District to RG 2 FH General Residential Flood Hazard District containing 5.14 acres, more or less submitted by Terry Drumright of TLM on behalf of Gail Gusterson. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Fair.
Second.
Okay, now, now, okay.
Inspecting with the people over there in Belle Trace and Cottonwood, they are naturally still not satisfied with the results they've had and that we've been given here. And they would like the opportunity to hire an engineer, a private engineer, to do a study, satisfy their minds. So this morning, I'd like to ask the council to table this matter and give them this opportunity. I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the ordinance on second reading and a second. Is that an amendment or? There's a motion on the table to table the motion. You made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second to that motion. Let's hit me as far as Robert's rules. We have one, one, one motion to.
First motion.
Approved.
I believe the motion to table would take the consideration and take it off the calendar, off the docket, and start a motion. A motion to delay consideration for 30 days would just simply be set. The hearing of the motion, I'm not sure what Councilman Cisco wants.
It's appropriate under Robert's rules of order to move to delay or defer consideration. And if that, that motion fails, the discussion ends, and the motion is put on the table, which basically.
The primary motion.
In cold storage. A motion to extend consideration for 30 days or for one council meeting would be a different type of motion. I think both of those are appropriate at this time. But that, but it would have to have a majority to carry that, I think. Having looked at the book, because I didn't know this was going to be done, so it's a pop quiz, but I.
Okay. Councilman Cisco, is there any timeframe or?
Well, I just want to give them time. They want to hire a private engineer to do a study out there on this water situation to satisfy their minds, is what they want to do. And I think they should be given this opportunity.
Okay.
I hope it would be done within 30 to 60 days. Hope 30.
I would suggest, Mayor, that we hear from the Dream Center Development people to see, you know, how that would affect them.
Well, this, this is an ordinance on second reading. Normally, normally, we're not going to public hearing because we already had two. But we, I think we need to deal with the motions that are on the table. Number one is the, the ordinance be approved on second reading. We have a motion and a second. Then we have Councilman Cisco's motion to table for further consideration by an engineering firm. Tell about that second motion. Take the president over the first.
I think that motion could be considered before voting on the.
No more than six days. You give them time to get somebody. Say, say, yeah, attorney.
I think that the motion to delay or to table the motion that's been moved and seconded, I think it's appropriate to take it before you do the final vote.
Okay, okay, so, okay, we have a motion to table. Along with that, that motion comes a timeframe of 30 to 60 days. Shall we tie down the number of days, Councilman, to 60? Is that?
That's fair with me. I mean, you know, I want to give these people the opportunity to see what the problems, if there is any, or if there's not, to satisfy them.
Okay, all right, then we, we have, based on city attorney's valuation, Robert's rules, we have that motion to table for 60 days awaiting a study from an engineering group as far as the hydraulics of that particular lot. Is there, we have the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Delay for 60 days, we have a second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And that motion passes with seven members voting yes, one voting no, and one abstaining.
Okay, motion will, will have been approved for a 60-day study of that particular area for hydraulics and.
And that would, just to complete the thought, that would put it on the October agenda for the second reading.
That's right.
That's what I, what I heard, Council.
I think that's ample time, yes, sir.
Okay.
And could I just say, we'll get a report of that, right? We'll get, the city council will get a report of the engineers.
Here's, here's my interpretation, is this matter has been deferred until the October meeting.
Okay.
Either you will or you won't. I mean, that's up, that's up to people outside this.
That would help us know how to vote, yeah, okay.
All we're doing is just simply delaying till October, okay?
All right. Okay. Item, under new business. Item one, consideration of contract for banking services, Ms. White.
It's time, good morning.
Good morning.
It's time once again for us to look at the banking services for the city of Jackson. We sent out a proposal, and we received five back, one from First Tennessee Bank, Regions, First Bank, Simmons, and Bank of Jackson. We had a committee comprised of six people. It was Connie Cox, Al Lefoon, Sam Dawson, Karen Bell, Catherine Keck, and myself. We looked at all of these proposals, and we're making a recommendation to you to stay with First Bank. And First Bank had the lowest monthly fee for all services, and they did not require us to have a month, a monthly, daily average.
Motion approved, second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval and properly seconded, any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Item two is approval of proposed sale of city-owned surplus property, land located at 410 Orleans Alley.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, council.
Okay. Tell us again what she's going to use that for, Stan, I believe you, what that's intended to be used for. You, you shared it with us the other night, and I thought people might like to hear that.
It's a piece of property that's adjacent to her current event kind of center that she's got there. So she's just basically tying it into her additional property that she has, and she'll incorporate into the use that she already has on, on the piece of property.
With weddings and that.
Yes.
And it has been published, public notice that is no responsible counter. One gentleman came to see me just to make sure we weren't putting on a perpetrating of the block.
No other interest.
No other. And there's no taxes due because the city of Jackson has owned the property since 2006.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion, right, and a second. Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Item three, consideration of contract amendment between the city of Jackson, Tennessee, Department of Transportation for the southern extension of SR 186 from SR 1 Airways Boulevard to SR 5 South Highland Avenue project. We're, got a couple of folks in our audience today from T-Dot. They're great allies of ours, and so, let me call on Jason Baker, who heads up Region Four of T-Dot here in, in Jackson to, to come up. And also Nicole Lawrence, who works with him in the T-Dot office. Thank you all for being here. And now, I'll, let me also ask Scott Chandler to come up, who will explain the amendment. And Jason, if you'd be kind of, just to explain to council maybe the projects that are underway in our city, especially the interstate projects and the interchanges, and then we'll let, and the, and the southern extension, then I'll let Scott produce, produce information on the amendments itself. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely, thank you all for allowing me to be here. Give update on the project that will widen I-40 from just west of the bypass to just east of Highland Avenue. Also, within that project is the interchanges at the bypass of Highland. Also, will be the redesign of the intersection at Casey Jones. That project is in the August letting, August 18th letting date, which means construction is going to be starting this fall. It will, like we said, it will redo the interchanges at both of those. It will also redo the intersections, so that's going to be, going to be good. Dates, as far as exactly when construction starts, some of the sequencing, that'll have to be kind of put together a little bit later, once we get the contractor on board and get a plan of operation and stuff. But we'll make sure we keep the, the city up to date. There's also going to be just, for your information, a, a large public outreach campaign that's going to go with this, so that everybody knows what to expect, when to expect it, things like that, so that we can give as much information as possible. And then also, another project that is moving forward, did you hear about State Route 18? There is a design meeting scheduled in September for that project that's going to look at the improvements of State Route 18 from north of Meek-Malice up to State Route 5 here in Jackson. And then I'm, can answer questions if Scott would like to.
Jason, how about, how about the Highland Avenue interchange along with all the interstate work? Is it?
It, it's in there as well. One of the things we are looking at right now is the opportunity to not have both bypass and Highland under construction at the same time. That's, like I said, a lot of that's trying to be finalized in the contract that we put out for letting. But that's being looked at. But yes, the intersect, the interchange there at Highland Avenue, the single-point urban interchange will be part of the project.
Okay, so the, the six-lining of the interstate, the interchange there at, at the bypass and Carriage House and Highland will be all under one bid.
Yes, sir, that's one contract that's letting all the state, yes, sir.
Okay. I know with the, with the approval of the Approved Act, we were able to resurrect the, the bypass, the southern extension of the bypass, which was really on a major whole position until the, the Approved Act was, was granted by the General Assembly. You want to bring us up to date as, as far as the next step in that project?
We can, the, the southern bypass project, as I said before, was in the, in the NEPA phase earlier, but there was no funding allocated for the design phase right away, further phases that goes along. With the passage of the Improved Act, it is one of the projects listed. All the, and just for the record, all the projects are listed in the Improved Act. There's a commitment that we're going to deliver those projects either under construction, contract, or complete within a 13- to 14-year timeframe. So it's a, it's a major amount of work, major undertaking to deliver all that. The southern bypass is listed in that. With it, we have it set for our NEPA, NEPA funding, or peak design for year one, which means, as Scott can look to, the proceeding forward with where we were, pick back up with that NEPA phase to complete it. And I guess from T-Dot's standpoint, it's going to be considered, what we consider a hybrid local programs project. And what I mean by hybrid, it is with the city of Jackson. The city started, the city's doing the NEPA phase, design phase. T-Dot's role is going to be, of course, coordination and oversight all through that process. But then T-Dot will actually take over for the right-of-way acquisition and construction, and that's what the department's going to oversee.
And that's basically what's on the agenda today, is the revised contract between the city of Jackson and T-Dot with the state to say that we're going to carry, basically carry the project forward and up until the right-of-way phase, and then the state would then take it on as a T-Dot project at that point.
Okay, we, we brought the project from, from its birth to, through the environmental, just about through the environmental, may have a little bit left in the environmental, but.
The contract today with Gretchen Smith and Partners will talk about is completing that NEPA phase.
We, we were fortunate enough to receive from Congress one of the last earmarks that, that came through that, that vehicle down to local government. And that, that funding has been used for staying for, for the environmental phase, for initial route design. So we're very fortunate to have that. And I think we do have some funding left, which will then drift over into design of that. So that is a, that's 100% Jackson, I assume, state and federal, federal project. And, and the city's involvement has been initially thus far through the earmark, which was received from Congress to, to, to move that project forward. I guess the important thing here is, is that, is that project has been resurrected from a cold and wet grave, and it looks like now, after the Improved Act, that it will become reality. And Jason, I'm not going to ask you to reach out there and give us a timeframe, but I think I've heard somewhere around three or four years, and that's obviously inaccurate, so.
To complete all the phases with a section of roadway that long, just the, the right-of-way itself, there's going to be a large right-of-way acquisition piece to it, so it's, we're several years down the road. And then depending on the length of it, it may even have to be split up into construction projects.
Okay, okay. But I think, again, the important thing is that that will, that is becoming a reality, and we will have our southern extension of the bypass and also the, the work on the interstate, which will really, has there been a, has there been a price tag attached to the southern bypass? Rough, extremely rough?
I believe I might have something pulled up for it. Let's see here. Is that what it's put it on there?
We fired 150, 160 million.
Okay, okay.
And who pays for that?
It's a state and federal project.
No tax payers.
No, no local. It's going to come from South Jackson.
I wish you were.
That's where it is.
That's who you should thank for it.
Hope I live to see it.
Mayor Wayne's pulling that up. We are underway with the widening of Dr. F. E. Wright from Parkway to Ridge Quest as well. That's a pretty significant project that will be coming through, and we're hoping that the council will see something on that as early as November as well.
Okay.
I was just going to say, the, the last update we had is roughly cost of completion looked to be for the southern bypass extension, the 162 million or so for that.
So along with the, again, I think the important thing here is the investment that, that's going into our city, both from the interstate project, which is roughly 100 million, and along with the, with the bypass, another 160 million. So roughly $260 million over the next several years will be spent in our city for, for infrastructure improvements, and we, we appreciate that effort. Any questions of council as far as these, yes?
Did you say that the, the bypass in Highland widened I-40 would start in the fall of 2018? Not the fall of this year, fall of?
The, the fall of this year.
The fall of 2017.
The, the, the interstate widening, the interchanges at bypass and Highland, the intersection at Casey Jones and the bypass, all of that is in the August 2017, August 18th of this year letting.
Okay, but the construction will start also in the fall?
Construction will be this fall. Like I said, I can't give you exact timeframe, but it'll be.
I was planning on moving before that happened. I don't guess it'll be.
You've got 18 days to read, okay.
Better 2017, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I had a quick question if I could. How many projects statewide, if you know, are coming under the Improved Act?
962, I believe, total.
And how many of those are here in Madison County?
I can pull that up and tell you right now. And I will put a plug in for those who would like. We have a website, a spot website. It's an interactive map, so you can search by county, you can search by district, whatever. You can pull up what types of projects and everything. I'd be happy to, to share that. As far as Madison County, there are 24 total projects totaling about $340 million in Improved Act.
All right, thank you.
What was the website again?
And I'll have to pull up the entire thing. It's what we refer to as our spot website. You can get through it through, through the T-Dot webpage or the Tennessee, tn.gov webpage.
If I got a T-Dot webpage, I can find it then, okay.
If you're at the T-Dot webpage, it'll talk with the Improved Act, and there's links in there that'll take you to that interactive map. But it gives you kind of an overview of what the project would entail. I mean, a very small description of it. When it says cost to complete, that's estimated cost for all the phases that are left remaining, things like that.
Okay, okay. Okay, we have, again, item three is, we, we have two amendments. Scott?
Yeah, they're two separate ones. The first one is the contract between the T-Dot and the city of Jackson. It basically sets things back in motion for us locally managing the NEPA, finishing of the NEPA phase, and then the, we'll carry it through the design. And so it sets that up and tells where the funding's coming from and that kind of thing.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion, second approval, and a second discussion from council to approve this contract. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And I think you have one more. Do you not?
Yes, there's a, the second is a, it's really an amendment to the. Yes, there's a, the second is a, it's, it's really an amendment to the original work that was being completed for the NEPA phase, but it's a professional service agreement with Grisham Smith and Partners, who was conducting that in the past, and this is the contract for them to complete that NEPA phase. We will then come back to you again with a, a new contract for the design. Grisham also have, will be doing that design phase, but we'll do that at a later date once we get the NEPA process completed.
Sure, move. Second motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay.
Karen, Karen does have the budget amendment on that line item covering the funds, and it's a hundred percent reimbursable, like we're talking about.
Okay, thank you, Scott, thank you, Jackson, I appreciate you. Item five, is recommendation from Jackson Downtown Development Corporation, changes to downtown parking policy. Matt and Chris to come up and present that. Morning, guys.
Morning.
Morning.
Yep. Yeah, the, the JDDC Board of Directors has been taking a look at this for a while, and we have a few recommendations for, given the current kind of climate and some things that are emerging, that could be helpful to the, to the, to the business community down here if we adjust a couple things on parking. So first of all, would be an increase from one hour to two hour parking throughout downtown. The only exceptions to that would be the two strips immediately adjacent to the county courthouse, which would remain as they are. Also, an increased wayfinding signage to highlight the ample public parking that is available, as well as to direct people to that. And then the last thing to consider would be an increase in the parking violation fine from five dollars to ten dollars to act as a deterrent from those who are kind of just, see that as a, as a fee to, to use on street parking.
Any, any questions of council? Lewis, we have to go to our ordinance to change that fine, right, or can we do that internally, or...
I believe the Chief of Police has been given that authority to regulate parking, roadways, speed.
Okay, okay.
I can verify that for you.
Okay, all right. Any questions of council?
And again, just state the rationale for increasing the fine.
Just, there seems to be, that doesn't, the current five dollar fine doesn't seem to be enough of a disincentive to really encourage people to, who work downtown, to use the public parking lot. A lot of people sort of just see that as a, as a fee they pay to park around their office.
And, and you're increasing the time that a car can park on the street, too?
Yes, sir.
But you're increasing the time only in certain areas, though, right?
Uh, it's across downtown, with the exception of those two strips around the courthouse.
Right around the courthouse, right?
Yes, sir. That's the east side and the south side of the county courthouse.
And it's going from one hour to two hours? Is that it, or, okay, all right, okay. Okay, that comes from your board as far as approval, Chris, any?
Correct.
Okay.
This is, you know, we don't, I don't have, we don't have a copy of this, so what would, we potentially be voting on, on the recommendation, will require us to also purchase wayfinding signs and put those up, and where would those come from? Would that be the city, would that be Jackson Downtown Development?
I believe the, the One Jackson Committee has a, maybe either that committee proper or a subcommittee that's looking at wayfinding for the city, and I think it would just be an element of that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with respect and Attorney Cobb to the finding process that he's recommending, that the Downtown Association is recommending, do we need to try to vote on it today or wait?
Uh, I think, I think, yeah, I think that was the intent, go ahead and approve their, their recommendation from that board.
The finding aspect of it, though.
I think, I think what we can do on the, on the fine would be, if, if an ordinance is not required, then obviously we can go ahead and handle that internally, if so, then it'll have to be an ordinance on two readings, and we'll have to hold that part of the, of the recommendation until that gets completed. Hopefully it can be handled internally, but not, we're real good at putting ordinances together.
Mayor, has the city looked at this relative to the fine?
Um, not to the fine, I don't think, I think the whole thing has been run through the JPD and, and the chief, and Ronnie Adams, who kind of handles the traffic issue, especially in downtown park, and I think they have, they have blessed the, the extending time and also the, the fine, but you get that...
That's right, yes, sir.
I think, Mr. Chairman, that the recommendations are good, but a little cautious about the finding aspect, whether or not we can do it or not, as it relate to, not without an ordinance. Okay? They're good recommendations, but...
While he's looking at that, would, would you mind repeating the three things that you're saying that we need to vote on? I don't wanna vote on something I don't wanna vote on exactly.
Yes, sir, uh, the, the heart of it is a change from one hour to two hour parking throughout downtown, with those two exceptions.
And that's where we'll be changing that, not, not everywhere?
It is, it is all throughout downtown, with the only exceptions of the strip directly to the east of the county courthouse and directly to the south, the two strips facing the courthouse on those sides, which, which would remain as they currently are.
Okay, so just surrounding the courthouse, we're going to two hours, everyone else still...
No.
Stay in one hour, and everyone else can go two hours, okay?
Thirty minutes around the courthouse, two hours around the rest of them.
That's right.
And the fine is, again, increased how much?
The, the fine is, is currently five dollars, and we're recommending taking a look at moving that to ten dollars, yes, sir.
That's just the two things we're voting on?
And then, also, I think a necessary element across the long term is gonna be some signage, wayfinding signage, to help people find the park, public parking that's currently available.
Okay, so just signage for around the amp area, where, where people could park for him?
And we have someone working on design of a new, some new signage, doing it as far as the size and the character, and hopefully put a little bit more class to the, to the signage than we have now, I hope, and I think we do.
So provided that we're okay to make the recommendation with Attorney Cobb, we'd just be voting on the first two items, number three is already in the One Jackson plan, am I correct?
Mm-mm.
It's not?
No, I think they're saying all three things, correct?
That's right. I, I believe that, that the One Jackson Committee is looking at wayfinding, I may have been mistaken on that, there's a committee that's looking at wayfinding.
They're looking at signage and implementing some new signage, some new design, if you would, on signage, and we're still in a, in a position, we're not, Scott, to make our own signage, you know, we, we have capability to, to make our own signs, we have design. We go ahead and, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, we have, we have a recommendation from the board, and if it appears that we have to have an ordinance change on, on the, on the fine, then we can always come back and do that at another meeting, so as far as the other recommendations, if council wants to, to move that we, that be adopted by the city, I think it'd certainly be in order.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion that we approve the extended time to two hours and location they're mentioning, we revise signage for the amp parking, and then we increase the parking from five to ten dollars, providing the Chief of Police can do that, and if not, that we go forward.
An ordinance, okay. Everybody understand the motion?
Is motion a contingency? With respect to the finding?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll have to be contingent upon, if we, if we can do it internally, then it's over, if not, we'll have to come back with an ordinance, so it will be contingent upon the city's ability to do, change the fine internally.
Second is motion.
Okay, we have a motion, second, everybody, everybody good with it? Okay, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. And we also wanna thank you so much for your support of JDDC on a yearly basis, got a lot of great things going on downtown, things, things are better than ever, and just have a lot of momentum going into the rest of the year, so thank you all.
Thank you, thank you all, what you do. Okay, item six, it may be five on your agenda, but I changed mine, it's item six, update to construction of Animal Care and Adoption Center on Canal Co. Drive in the City of Jackson, Tennessee. Dr. Lake and Frank McMaine here with the foundation to go over that project with us. Thank you all for being here, thanks for all your hard work, two and a half, three years on this project. Pilot needs to know where he's taking off from, but also where he's gonna land, so we finally landed this day.
Great, thank you, council, for entertaining us today. I wanna thank the committee, besides Frank, the city's been represented, Sam and Kathleen are here, and then Kendall's here from the rescues. We've had rescue, all the animals, several of animal rescues have been involved in this committee that's been meeting for about eighteen months, and I wanna talk to you men about the proposed animal care center, it'll be about fifty-two hundred square feet, it will be constructed on Canal Co. Drive in the property the city already owns, that is across the street from the Public Works Building. It will be a quarantine, we're calling it the animal care center, but when animals are first rescued, they will be taken to this facility, there'll be a twenty-four hour drop-off ability for the city to drop off animals they may get, and it will, they will have forty-eight kennels for dogs, and it'll have about nine for cats. It'll have a surgical suite in it where we can do surgery for the animals, there will be a cruelty space, it will have wash area to keep the animals clean, and it will provide state-of-the-art, current methods to take care of animals that are rescued in our community. It will be a great step forward, this will be a no-kill facility, no animal will be put to sleep because of an arbitrary time limit, so animals will be brought in and cared for in a professional manner, be operated by the City of Jackson, and I want Frank just to briefly tell you what the foundation's involvement is, and then I guess we'll just take questions.
We have the Fishman Fund, which is an endowment that was left to the city some time ago to take care of animals, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'll take the income off of that, and then the animal groups, we're working on putting together five fundraisers to be able to raise the money through the endowment and the fundraisers to provide the vet care and the food for the animals, and the rest should be contained within the daily operations.
Every animal in this facility will have a bed, it will have a toy, and it will have food, so the animals will be cared for, the rescues, and some of the pet businesses here in town have advised us on what's the best bed to get, what's the best kind of food to get for them, and the toys that cannot hurt them while they're there.
I think the, the goal is, as we begin construction on the quarantine center, that the goal would be obviously to go ahead and construct the second building, which will be the animal adoption center, right next to it with a, with a, with a dog park, obviously there. Plans are, contingent plans are, that obviously the second building will depend on a number of things. Number one, the sale of the existing building from the, from the Humane Society, we have Lynn Colwell here, who's been at the foundation, the Humane Society and single-handedly really held that, that, that group together over the years, obviously, we, we'd like, be able to like to sell the building to someone to, for another, another use. If we're able to do that, then we'll take the proceeds from that sale, put it into the animal adoption center, along with the continuing donations and commitment from a lot of different people. On the initial construction of the quarantine center, we, we have roughly two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from city funding to, to build that facility, then we also have a hundred thousand dollar gift from anonymous benefactor to go along with that, then also a fifty thousand dollar gift from Waste Management, from their commitment to this project several years ago, a couple of years ago. So we think with, with that, we'll be able to get the quarantine center certainly underway, and a lot will depend on whether we, how, how the existing Humane Society building is, how that flips out. If we're unable to, to move the building and raise the funds, then obviously the Humane Society building will be used as the, as the animal adoption center, until we're able to, to move that building, get some revenue, do some additional fundraising, and build the building as planned in front of Public Services Building on Canal Co. I need to commend a lot of different people who have spent hours and hours and hours putting this, putting this, this program together. Again, Lynn has been, has been instrumental in working with us toward continued fundraising efforts. The, the operation budget of this center will not really include food and animal care that will come through the, through the foundation funding, and with, with a lot of people's help and, and unselfish donations to our animals. I think it just speaks volumes, you know, and I think, I think Lynn has said this a number of times, it just, it, it tells volumes about us as a people and how we treat our animals, and to have this as really a model, a model for all of West Tennessee, if not the state, that's the intent, and hopefully with all the help of the rescue groups and the adoption groups and our staff, we'll be able to do that, so thank you all for, for everything y'all have done. If y'all have any questions, it'd be a good time to ask them, or Lynn?
I have, I have a quick question if I could, Mayor. First of all, thank you, Vicki, and thank you, Frank, for your hard work on this project, it's very important. My question is, is spay and neuter a program a part of this project, and, and if it is, tell us how important that is.
It's, it's very important in the long run, that's really how you control your animal population. We, this year, the West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation did apply for state spay and neuter grant, so we could get involved in that, so we can get our processes down on how that will work, but spay and neuter, this facility will have a surgical suite where they can do spay and neuter, and we intend to do that on all the animals that come in.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
I just have a comment, this is one that's dear to my heart, and I think everybody had any part in it, because as the mayor said, I mean, the way a city treats its most vulnerable determines how good a city you really have, and I appreciate all this hard work you've come to and looking forward to this, and, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you all would, what you're doing is fine, but the locale, make sure that you talk with the residents who...
Behind it.
Not too far away, it's located in the district that I represent.
Yes, sir.
Probably two, three hundred yards away from there, if you would have a public meeting over there, I appreciate it.
Mayor, I have, I have two questions. Have the fundraisers for the operation of the quarantine center started? The, the six fundraisers that you mentioned, have they gone on? They haven't started yet?
We've kind of, we have the Humane Society, which has theirs, and then we basically have a kind of united effort and the other animal groups, and so we've made those commitments that once this gets started, we have those united effort, we keep those fundraisers going and add some others to it.
Okay.
And we also have been working on a naming gift that would help us fund the rest of the construction.
Lynn, you have, what, two, three a year of fundraising effort?
I've been doing three for nineteen years, four of them done, but two of pets.
Okay, all that funding, Lynn has graciously agreed to continue that fundraising effort, and those funds will go into the foundation, again, for food and care, vet care, other, other types of care for the, for the animals that are there, where we can spend the city funding on staff and people who, who can help physically take care of the animals while they're there. Obviously, the goal is to work ourselves out of business.
Dr. Lake, are we fighting an uphill battle with this if we don't have a spay and neuter ordinance?
I would love to have a spay and neuter ordinance, I would love for the council to entertain that again, if it's your wish, I would love to bring one back before this group, if the mayor so desires, and the council so desires.
I think given, the way we're, the way we're structuring it now, every animal that leaves the facility will be spayed or neutered.
Yes, yes, sir.
And I guess long term, long term, we're going to accomplish that. I'm, I'm not saying that it's, it's an ordinance that, that we should shove back for a while, but, but obviously with, with what we're doing now, we got a lot on our plate, we've really got a lot on our plate, and enforcement of that in itself would, would take quite a few resources to get that done, so I think it's something we all, we all would like to see, and there probably will be a time and a place to, to consider that ordinance, but at least for right now, we're accomplishing what we need to accomplish, you know, one tenth of one percent at a time.
Mayor, I have one question, I've long been proposing spay and neuter and also, but the, the grant you're talking about, was that for spay and neuter ordinance for citywide, or is that just a grant for the...
It's, it's just a grant for the foundation for low, for seniors and low income to get their animals spayed and neutered.
Okay, so that will provide people that can't afford it, the opportunity to spay and neuter their pets?
Correct, and it's a small amount, we felt that we should start this year, hoping that council would approve this, so that when the facility opened... when the facility opened, we'd at least have our process and procedures down.
Okay, and that would be done at the, at the center?
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I will say, this committee has worked very hard. We've written all our operational procedures and policies. We've actually all, written all the job descriptions. So we, we're really way ahead of, of where we need to be on, on just operating this facility once it's constructed. If you want to see any of the policies, we have them all.
When, when are we looking to, to open this?
Mayor, it's gonna...
Well, we're going, we're going to have a meeting today with, with the engineers and also the building. Hal Crocker has volunteered his time at no cost to act as consultant for this project, along with some of the staff. If they have to do some, some drafting and, you know, different items in their shop, obviously, he will charge some for that. But as far as his time, spending in consultation, getting the bids, getting to subcontractors. The city will act as general contractor on these facilities in order to save, save some funding, and I think we'll be able to do that. Mr. Crocker will act as, as the coordinator of all the subcontractors.
The building will have a brick front and kind of a, just an aluminum back to save money. So instead of bricking the whole building, we're trying to be good stewards of the funding. So that's, that's how we're proposing to build it.
We're, we're thinking sometime in our lifetime.
Oh, absolutely.
About the time the bypass is finished down south.
No, I would, I would hope by next year we would have this. This has been a dream of ours, so...
I think that, once we get part of this completed and we have this united effort, that will encourage some people that want to support various things like spay and neutering, that they will come on board in a more positive way.
And we do have, if we are successful in getting funding, we do have the plans for the adoption center. It will be about forty-nine hundred square feet. We actually have the floor plans already laid out for it as well.
Thanks.
Well, again, my, my thanks, my office, but also the council for all the time that everyone has spent on this project over the years, and especially to Vicki and Frank and all the adoption agencies, the, the animal rights groups who have been a big part of this. All of them have looked at the plans. They've been thoroughly vetted by, by those organizations. Lynn has been a warrior for all these years in, in supporting the Humane Society. She has been a, a major, a major part of what we've been able to do thus far, and we will continue and hopefully improve vastly our care of the animals. So again, thank you all so much for you, for all your help.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, going to item seven. Board appointments. We have Board of Environmental Advisory and Appeals, Bobby Cole, Eddie O'Neill, Jerry Day, James Grennis as reappointments.
So moved.
Have a motion made a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Housing Board of Adjustment Appeals, we have Maxine Carroll and Ab Taylor.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
And under the zoning appeals board, we have Mamie Hutchinson as a reappointment, Max Hart Jr.'s reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
And also, under the library board of trustees, Dr. Charles Baldwin as a reappointment.
So moved.
We have a motion made and seconded. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Item seven, Mr. Bale has a budget amendment, I think.
Thought we were going to get through a month without, but then T. dot came along. So this amendment is for the southern bypass professional services agreement, totally reimbursable, one hundred percent by T. dot, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. And I'll put Jason's number on speed dial to make sure we get it a hundred percent reimbursed.
So moved. Second.
Motion is seconded, discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bale.